Yes, thank you, Ms. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
My mic, alright, alright, here we go. At 4:01, I'd like to call to order the March 7th, 2023 meeting of the Marietta City Council Roll Call. May the city clerk please do roll call for determination of a quorum.
Councilmember Warren.
I am here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Present.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, is there any public comments on closed session items only?
Seeing none.
Wonderful. Then I will announce and we will go into closed session items. Madam City Clerk, could you please go over the closed session items?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would love to. As listed on the agenda, the City Council will meet in closed session on four items. CS1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 5495694 because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in five cases. The City Council will also meet in CS2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 5495692 and D3, significant exposure to litigation in one case. The City Council will also meet in CS3, conference with labor negotiator. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with the city manager, city attorney, the city's negotiators regarding labor negotiations with the Marietta Police Officers Association, representing the city's police officers, corporals, detectives, and sergeants. The Marietta Police Management Association, representing the city's police lieutenants and captains. The Marietta Firefighters Association, representing the city's fire engineers, captains, and firefighters. And the Marietta Fire Management Association, representing the city's fire battalion chiefs, chiefs, I apologize. And lastly, the City Council will meet in CS4, Public Employee Performance Evaluation. They will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 54957, title position, city manager.
Wow, very well said, Madam City Clerk. Now, we will move on to recess, to closed session.
Yes, and return at 6 o'clock for the regular, yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the 6:00 PM regular meeting of the Marietta City Council. And we're reconvening from our closed session. And announcement of closed session action, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on four items. The fourth item will be continued until after the regular meeting, and there will be report out at that time. On CS1, there was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.94. The City Council unanimously authorized settlement in the opioid litigation with pharmacies, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, Teva, and Allergan. In item CS2, there was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.92 and D3. In that item, the council was updated, no reportable action. Item CS3 was to confer with legal counsel regarding labor negotiations with four groups pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Again, in that item, the City Council was updated, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, may we move to roll call, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Warren.
Present.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Present.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Present.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to move to the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. If you could all rise for City Councilman Ron Holliday to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, remain standing.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
Let's be in a moment of prayer. God of all people, God of many names. You are the God who places us within community. In the community to live, to work, to play, to serve. We come before you this evening in this meeting of the City Council. And we pray for those on the City Council and the others in this room that are leading, leading your people, leading in this community. And we pray that during this meeting you would grant them wisdom. Along with that, fill them with compassion, mercy, justice that comes from you. Guide them well, that the decisions they make tonight will be wise ones. And thus we pray, in your name, O God, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Schaefer was nice enough to come tonight for us, and he represents hospice of the valley. Thank you so much, Mr. Schaefer, for those beautiful words. Thank you. Alright, moving on to presentations. We will start with Rancho Water District, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. We have Rob Grantham, the general manager with Rancho Water.
Mayor, members of the council, it's very nice to see you and appreciate the time, as always. As you know, we consider this a very, you know, very important partnership. And I want to come and give you a quick update on the water conditions throughout the state and what we're doing about it. And the mayor and I were honored to be on a Colorado River trip not too long ago, and so I'll reference that as well as we continue. So, it's been a great year, great winter for me. It's been raining, let's start there. Sorry, sorry, everyone. And so, but the precipitation has been phenomenal. What it's really resulted in is that we are seeing an increase in snow levels, and we've also seen an increase in our statewide reservoirs. And so, I'm going to talk a little bit about that, and also our water system, and why, as much as I want to say we're out of the woods, we're not even close to it. And so, I just, to be honest about that. You know, in terms of the snowpack, we're just nearly 200% in Northern California. Actually, in the Southern Sierras, we're even over. And not, it's not to be, not to actually read it, but what we are seeing is throughout the state, our reservoirs were filling. And that's really important. Our water comes from Northern California. Last year, we really received, we actually received no water from Northern California. It's really been relying upon the Colorado River. And so, that really is a critical part of our infrastructure, and I'm going to talk about that as we go today. So, we import water from 500, 600 miles away. We like Northern California water, and that's a really critical part of our infrastructure. But here, as we, you know, in Marietta, 100% of our water is from the Colorado River. And the Colorado River is under extreme stress. Last year, we were under extreme stress for the state as well. If we look at, while we're getting to those full levels in the state projects up in Oroville, et cetera, we're at 25% or quarter full in Powell and Mead. And so, that critical supply source that we, that we have every day is under extreme threat. And so, on the news, you hear, state of California, there's seven basin states that are really vying for an allocation on that river, river water. And that's, that's really been on the news a lot. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about that today, and how we're trying to diversify those supplies. So, this picture is telling, or the series of pictures are telling. You know, we have extreme volatility in terms of water supply throughout the state of California. One of the things that I'm going to talk about in terms of what we're working with the state and advocating for, 2017, we were spilling on Oroville, and we all remember that, those news events. Last year, Oroville was running nearly dry. And throughout the state, we do have Diamond Valley here locally, which is a critical supply source for us. But then, we've recovered this year. And so, we really hope to have, you know, a strong spring and really be able to rely upon Northern California snowpack, and then import that water and store it in our reservoirs locally. But lying on in what we're doing, we can't just hope. And so, that's really part of the message. So, from Rancho, and I'll talk about Rancho Water, there's four water agencies that serve the community. And we work really well together with the other three agencies, Eastern and Western and Elsinore. For us, community engagement, if we look at our water demands throughout the, throughout the community, we've reduced our demands by almost 50% over the past 15 to 20 years. That's amazing. You know, in Northern California, the question is, how'd you do that? And specifically, by not wagging your finger. It's by encouraging, giving the community a choice, an ability to become more efficient, and doing it in an encouraging way, and that's something we're very proud of. Second is advocacy. And so, I'm going to talk about that from the statewide level, and also from the federal level. So, looking for, as we make investments in water supply, it can't just be on us and the local community. That really has to come from a partnership with Sacramento, has to come from a partnership with the federal government. And then also the resource planning and investment. I'm going to talk about how we, as your water providers, are really working in strong collaboration. So, for us, again, that community engagement, saying thank you, and thank you is the appropriate phrase to the community, really done a wonderful job. But beyond thank you, it's, okay, how do we give you, the community, the tools to be efficient, but maintain the character of something we're all so proud of here in our community? We just received a half a million dollar grant from the state of California, and with that, we're using it to, we've launched a program called Temecula, Marietta, and Bloom. And so, we're, you know, basically, it's a concierge service, and I can actually say that concierge service. We're, we're looking at, okay, a pallet of, you know, drought tolerant varietals are beautiful, and they fit the character of the community, which is really important. It needs to fit Marietta. And so, how do we support people as they look, as they look at it, and, well, I like my turf, what are some alternatives, and how might it work? Because we want it to be a choice, not a pressure. We also, and I think I've mentioned before, we were invited to the White House in 2015. We were the first ones out of the gate in terms of my water tracker. Here's how much you consume, so you can control what you're doing. Knowledge-based decisions by our, by the community. And then, some of the things that you don't know we're working on, we're working on, I started a program with the 20 largest water wastewater agencies in the state with the California Energy Commission, and now going to the Public Utilities Commission. We have a power crisis in the state, too. We use 10% as an industry, 10% of the energy in the state. How are we part of the solution? But giving, you know, really leaning in and say, Sacramento, here are some solutions for you, and, and really trying to lead that charge, and something we're very proud of, and that's really part of the community. Now, getting to advocacy. So, you know, what I do want, I know the council knows, but then the community to know, is we really are fighting hard in terms of, you know, and really trying to get the right message across to our, you know, to, to our legislators, and really get the right legislation passed. And so, I was one of the 14 water managers to be invited to meet with the governor. It was, uh, it was actually, it was really, it was good interaction, and it was, hey, thank you for what you're doing, we need to do more. And it seemed like there was an open ear, to be very honest. You know, we are proposing legislation, or running with legislation right now, and I want to give due credit to my colleague, Craig Miller, the general manager of Western. This was one of his passion projects, and solve the water crisis, and leading, hey, there's an education process, now we're running legislation that puts the feet to the fire of Sacramento and say, we need to develop water supply, we need to develop storage, and setting a target for 2050, and holding accountable. That's how we're going to solve these cyclical crises that we continue to deal with. We are in a crisis right now, I don't want to, this is a long range, but, you know, we do need to, we do need to work to, you know, to a long-term solution. And my government affairs manager is leading that charge, and very proud of her for doing it. Next week, I get to testify to the Senate Finance Committee, so I hope Mr. Kelly Sarado is nice to me when I testify, so. He's a, he's, he's our local, local guy, right? So, let me talk about what we're, what we're doing. From a water supply standpoint, we want, we're creating a bank of water. And so, it's not just supplies, but do we have it for those cyclical years? And so, we're spending $100 million to develop local groundwater, to rather expand our local groundwater, so we can deal with, attenuate those, those dry periods. And that's the same for Elsinore, that's the same for Eastern, and that's something we're very proud of. We're also, for us, replacing our dam, we have a 43,000 acre foot lake. Please come camping at the KOA, it's fantastic. Well, that's our property, we have 8,000 acres, which we use as a community asset, and by the way, that's a big source of our water supply. And so, we're in the process of, the final stages of, about to go to construction early next year to rebuild that dam. And then, some of the interesting things that we're doing is, you know, the energy, the energy issue. Well, we were talking with the Department of Energy, the federal level, to pay for energy efficiencies. One statistic I gave at a presentation just a week and a half ago, was if we operated our water system, like every, like the normal, our peer agencies, our power bill would have been 25 million last year. It was 8.5. That's pretty remarkable, and I've only been with the district for two years, so I can't take credit. That's some innovation and just wonderful thinking over time. We just received a grant from USBR, continuing to optimize our system. We also received another grant with, to work with NASA, looking for leak detection. Water system's a dynamic system, as you all know. Sorry when we interrupt your, you know, interrupt your drive at times. But, you know, we are 1,500 miles of pipe underground. We can't always see those leaks, we can't detect them. We're working with NASA to actually look at how we can do it from a satellite. It's pretty innovative stuff. We solve it, we're passing it out to every other water agency around. And so, the last thing I want to leave you with is, is, you know, one thing that I've heard many times, and we take it to heart, is we expect collaboration, we expect regional thinking. And for the four water agencies, we started a year ago, looking at regional planning on water supply. And I know this is part of our, our trip down to Colorado. And so, we just submitted for two grants to the US Bureau of Reclamation, $1 million apiece, and it's part of our regional program. One is for our groundwater program. We want to expand it to be able to serve Southwest Riverside County, and also benefit San Diego County and Orange County by having storage here in region. Anything goes wrong, you know, we can't rely on Kern County, it's here in region. Part of that, and one of the things we're looking, we're going to be looking at, so working with the city manager and the assistant city manager, is we may be building a desalter line. If we do that, that's about maximizing the use of recycled water, taking wastewater, purifying, purifying it. The benefit to, if we can accomplish it, if the finances work, it provides an opportunity for the county plan that benefits the city, bringing pharmaceutical manufacturing and other manufacturing to town, an invasion zone, et cetera. And so, as we work over this, work on this over the next year, we've already received a $1.1 million grant from the state, we will, and we are already working with city staff, and so, we'll look for opportunities, because it's for us to think well beyond our water boundaries. The last one I mentioned is now water supply. We're looking at, could we build a financially viable desalter plant on Pendleton and bring that water to town? It's very expensive, but there's new technologies. San Diego County Water Authority, Assistant City Manager might have complained about those rates, those are not ours. The, we need to do it in an economical way that really benefits our local customers and doesn't just burden them. And so, that's where we're going to, we're going to study it, and that's what we're doing as the four agencies. And if we can, we pull that off, it would really be a benefit to the community in terms of reliable water supply, and again, at an affordable price. And so, with that, I just want to say thank you again for the time, it's always wonderful seeing you. I appreciate to Kim and Ivan for the invitation to come, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and we know where water is, life grows, right?
That's right.
I have one question, the rehab of the dam, will that increase the capacity of Vail?
It'll maintain the capacity. We actually looked at maybe expanding it sometime in the future. It wasn't the lowest cost option, so developing groundwater storage without evaporation, as well as other water supplies, probably next. But we are looking at potentially expanding in the future. If you'd like a tour, I'd be happy to take you on a tour.
Thank you, any of my other colleagues. Mayor Protem Stone.
Thank you so much for your presentation. With regards to the Colorado River, my understanding is that there has been such a lack of water that there was a possibility, if we did not have the type of rain, that the water districts would have had to cut back by 75%?
Up in the northern part of the, so just for the benefit of the community, so we import water, Metropolitan Water District of Southern California imports water, and the water, again, from the Colorado and Northern California, those areas, we call them northern areas of Met, which could only receive Northern California water. Last year, it was cut back, it was cut back 75%. And so, that's a risk we do bear as a community. We don't want to be in the same circumstance, we don't want them to be in that circumstance. And there, that's the, the whole portfolio redundancy that we're, we're after, from the advocacy and also the construction.
And with regards to lobbying up in Sacramento, let's talk about forest management, and let's talk about water retention and storage. I mean, is there a possibility that all the water agencies within the state of California could actually put pressure on our governor for those to, if we were to have, if we were able to capture the water and store it? If we were able to do forest management, just think about how much more water we would have in the state of California.
I, I absolutely agree. And so, I, I really appreciate the question. If I can, I'll talk to a couple points of what we are doing. And again, this is much directed to the community. We look at all the water in the state of California, 50% of it goes to the environment. 40% goes to agriculture, and 10% to urban. And so, one of the, and, and I know Mayor Protem Stone is well aware of this, the pushback when the state says, hey, you need to cut back, and they put all the pressure on urban, that's not quite fair. I could come up with a better phrase, but that's probably a truism. And so, you know, how do we capture water? And so, building sites, and it's 1.8 million acre feet, you know, that's equivalent to what Met imports in one year. Building that and moving forward on that project, that's a critical asset that we need to move forward. Having redundancy and building the pipeline in the Delta, that's a 20-year fix. And so, you know, so for, well, we're trying to lead by example, building those local projects, but then also going and advocating and teaming with the right folks. You know, we as a water industry, I'm a water wonk, and I, you know, I'm a card carrying, you know, it's, we talk to ourselves, you know, it's like, we're not moving the needle alone. And so, it really, what we are trying to do is think beyond ourselves, and say, who are our partners? We'll tag. And so, I was sitting in a meeting, if I just didn't, if I was going to wrap up with this, in a meeting with 20 of the water managers in Sacramento just two weeks ago. And it was like, oh, this darn ag. I was like, hold on a sec, that's $1.2 billion of our local economy, and with tourism and otherwise, and they're not, you know, don't vilify them, they have a property right. And so, we actually started talking about, what could we do? A farm bill, where we're basically buying efficiencies, we get 5% reduction in ag, all of a sudden, it starts to solve the urban problem, as well as, you know, the forest management and storage. But it's part of our portfolio approach that we really are working on and advocating for, you know, at, in Sacramento, but also specifically with the federal government, and Calvert and ISA and others. And so, they are very receptive, Padilla, Feinstein, and so, anyway, sorry, there was probably more than you asked, but...
No, it was good information. There's one other thing that I would really love for you to communicate to the residents of Marietta, and that is the 795,000 acres in Central Valley that are closed up permanently, and that means 795,000 jobs in addition to our ag leaving the state of California.
It's a difficult one, having water in, and, you know, the Congressman Calvert wrote a letter to the governor and to the Biden administration, saying, we need to turn on the pumps, we need to be thinking about the environment, but we need to balance it with, with jobs and securing, securing what is, you know, the breadbasket of, of the US. And so, having that rational conversation is really critical. And, and so, we, we try to do it, and I'm actually going back to DC in two weeks as part of the American Water Works Association, where we're advocating for exactly that, so I will take that message back.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No other questions? Wonderful, thank you so much for coming here tonight and making an amazing presentation.
That's very kind of you, great seeing you, thank you.
Alright, moving on to Marietta Through Time.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have a great presentation for you tonight. This is a project long in the works, but very much worth the wait. I'm happy to introduce Mr. Pete Palmer with the Marietta Rotary Club to provide an update on the Marietta Through Time project. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Leah, I really appreciate all you've done over the years to, to get us this, to this point. I'm just the spokesperson tonight, we have some other members of our committee who are here, I'm going to ask them to raise their hands real quick when I identify them. We have Patsy Orr, Jan Lundey, and then a couple of club members, Kirk Effinger, Dr. Ward Andrews, and our president-elect of our club, Mr. Rob Haskins is also here. And then, last but certainly not least, our current committee chair, who is Jody Lawler. Good evening, Mayor, fellow members of the council and city staff, thank you for allowing us to present an update on an exciting project, working its way through completion in Town Square Park. Marietta Through Time is a project of the Marietta Rotary Foundation in partnership with the city of Marietta, designed to bring a significant cultural and educational display to the park. Next slide, please. Maybe? There we go. Current status of the project, we have completed selection of all the images that are going to be presented. We've gotten those images for each time era laid out, with accompanying captions and historical text. We've selected some fully licensed bonded local contractors to help us get this project done, and they've actually been very helpful assisting us with the choice of materials that we're going to use. The marker for the project will be one like we have out in the park for the POW MIA memorial, so if you can imagine, there's a rock there with a big granite plate on it, with, with text and whatnot. The marker will identify the project and Rotary's participation in its development, and also provide for artwork and photo credits. Next slide, please. This is Jody, this is your cue. If we can approach the dais, we'd like to show you some of the sample granite that we're going to use. Now, this sample is not at its full thickness, but if we were to have a piece of granite as thick as going to be on these monuments, we would struggle to get it in here and carry it around.
Probably twice as thick as this, maybe two times as thick as this, and it's going to be a black granite with some, a, you'll have some depth to it with some background, sort of a shiny speckled look to it, but it, most of the granite is going to be taken out by text and porcelain inlays.
Indeed, so we've got all those images, we don't have a porcelain inlay, inlay for you tonight, but we're going to show you something better, I promise, coming up. So, the way this works is we'll have photographs with, or original artwork on these porcelain inlays, we'll have one dominant image for each time era, and then five to six complementary ones. And then, text and other design elements sandblasted into the granite with some color added, so it can be easily read. Next slide, please. Alright, this is the cue for a couple of folks in my committee to grab the big mockup. Want to show you tonight one of the time periods that we're going to display, and in this case, it happens to be the one about the native, the area Native American villages. So, next slide. So, that's a, a full mockup of the panel. It's tough to see it.
This is like, this is what's going to be on the large piece of concrete that's out there in Town Square Park.
Get up a little closer, so they can see it.
Well, I wasn't sure, I just looked down. But the Native American panel is the one that has... But the Native American panel is the one that has the color inlay. And this is in conjunction with, working with Pachanga for the text. As you can see, this is some beautiful pictures that they sent us that they would like to have for the Native American panel. And this is going to be etched into the granite. This is a white font and it's, you can see that you can read it from a distance, which is nice. And then these are going to be colored porcelain plates that are going to be inset into the granite.
All right, so we tried to paint for you both a mind, a word picture and an actual picture of what this is going to look like. Now, if our committee members are, are deaf, they're going to spin this around and they're going to show you another time era, which is the Fire District, which I know is, is near and dear to this body's heart. So you can see some great images of there, there of some key points in time.
Pictures there. They'll be inset again on porcelain. These are pictures that we see, see and reproduce from the Historical Society and from some of our local residents. We'll move down this way.
Good job, Patsy.
And there's one colored picture down here. But we went into.
Yeah, the good news is, is that there's, there's actually two feet of concrete first before you hit the panels, so.
So these are going to be up pretty high. But if we wanted the font and the production of the pictures large enough, then people could be walking down the path and sidewalks at Town Square Park and go over and see this. Now, again, remember those big concrete pillars that we have at Town Square Park? There's going to be one on the front of it and then there's something on the back of it. So that's what was going on there.
That's how we get to eight, four times two. All right, thanks. Appreciate it, ladies. All right, last slide. Tonight's mission was just to update you on this project as many of you are new to the council since we last had a chance to present. At our next Rotary Board meeting, we'll present the final budget for approval and expect to have final funds allocated to complete all eight panels and the landscape rework using this design approach and the materials that we've selected. With some hard work and a little bit of luck, who was the guy talking about rain here earlier? We should have this project to a conclusion by Veterans Day of 2023. As you well know, that is a big day in our club, as well as it is for the city. So that's our target. Visit mirietterotaryclub.org to learn more about our club and this project. And thank you so much for your time. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you so much. That's going to be absolutely amazing at Town Square Park. So thank you so much for all of you for your hard work and dedication to Marietta. Thank you. Any of my colleagues have any comments? A question?
I'd like to, a question of staff, if I could. Will you be, will staff be reviewing the other panels prior to them going up? I mean, will you be, will they be bringing it back to you for approval?
That's already been done.
Oh, it has been done. So staff has seen all this. Because the first two were pretty great. I'd like to see what the other are. I just didn't know how that process went.
No worries.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, thank you again.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Moving on, thank you so much for our great presentations this evening. We're going to move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Can I call for a motion and a second? Thank you. And a vote by everyone?
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much. Department Commission Announcements, City Manager.
I have nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Governing Body Commission and Committee Board Announcement Reports. City Clerk?
At this time, we will hear Governing Body Commission Board Reports. This is the opportunity for city council members to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, and commission committees in our board meeting attendance. Report shall not exceed three minutes. Councilmember Warren?
Thank you very much. I did attend on the 27th of February the Riverside County Transportation Commission Budget and Implementation Committee via Zoom. And there's no reportable action. I will be attending my commission meeting tomorrow morning and we'll have, bring that back to you at our next council meeting. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren?
Councilmember Lavelle?
I have no updates at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Holiday?
I attended the WRCOG, Western Regional Council of Governments, meeting yesterday. Had a lengthy conversation or presentation by California Air Resources Board, CARB, that's looking at a lot of planning and a lot of scoping and really has, trying to implement what the state legislature and the government wants to do as far as reducing greenhouse gas emissions. They still got a lot of, a lot of work left to do. The one question I asked is, is they're going to get California's clean air all cleaned up with what we're doing, but what about our neighboring jurisdictions like Mexico? San Diego is, because they're, one of the things they touted was it's going to save $6 billion in healthcare costs because we're going to have cleaner air. So not for San Diego if we don't, you know, do something with Mexico and, and are able to get them to clean up their air as well because air does not know boundaries. So they, they're putting that into the works and trying to figure that piece out too. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holiday?
Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you. I attended RCA yesterday and there are no reportable actions. Also, I attended the Southwest Women's Collaborative and Board Member Darcy Burke from Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District gave an update of the water, which she did here two weeks ago as well. And with regard to the Mental Behavior Health Committee that was approved in January, Councilman Lavelle and I are still working with staff on when that commission will come to fruition, a date and a time. So that concludes my governing body announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I attended Riverside Transit Agency Commission Meeting via Zoom. And kind of an exciting thing is they're working on a collaboration between Marietta, or RTA, and San Diego Bus Transportation to help get kids from this region to University of San Marcos. So they're really working on a collaborative effect. And that's all I have to report. I also attended with Mayor Protem Stone, the Southwest Riverside County Women's Elected Collaboration. So thank you so much. And moving on, did we get everyone?
We did. Now we'll move on to public comments.
All right, moving on to public comments and...
Now is the time for public comment. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject matter pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I have Ward Andrews.
Greetings and thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments. Welcome to our new city council members, newly elected a few months ago. We appreciate your service and willingness to serve and those who might have been reelected. I was worried about my own election, so I didn't keep track of all of the city politics. As Superintendent of Schools from Marietta Valley Unified School District, it's an absolute privilege to live and work in this community. I want to express my appreciation to the city council for the work we do with city officials, Kim and her team, all of her team back here, who really make it so that we can truly be partners in the work for our community. In my nine months now on the job, it's come to be very clear, the relationship we have and how important it is. We have 19 schools that are pretty much all within or close to the city boundaries. We have 22,500 students that come to school mostly every day when we can get them there. But we also have approximately, when you count all the walk-on coaches and substitutes and so forth, about 4,500 employees. That's a large number of employees. And we're one of the larger employers in the city. But when we add that, only about 3,000 of our students ride the bus. So approximately 19,000 of our students are driving or getting dropped off. That takes a parent and a car. And so on any given, then we've got athletics and activities that go well into the evening with performances and so forth. So on any given day, there's probably between 45,000 people engage in our schools. That's a lot of traffic. That has a lot of moving parts in our city. We appreciate the effort that it takes to make that happen. We do a lot of that orchestration, but it's not without the help of our friends, especially Chief Conrad and our SROs. We have a tremendous relationship. We want to express our appreciation for that ongoing relationship we have. It's really terrific. All the way down to like, hey, we need to stop signing in front of this school or at this intersection, and we're getting help to solve those problems. And on a regular basis, if it's with Ivan or Kristen or anyone else in the city, it's a great opportunity. So I just want to express our appreciation of working with the city. We look forward to some great new adventures, some things that we have dreamed up together that will really, we think, help to add to the value of our community, to serve our students and our community in the future. So I just want to express my appreciation and say thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here for us tonight.
Wornie Enochs?
Okay. I'm going to start off by saying my whole time on the council, I never voted for a tax increase. And I said that when I campaigned. So I don't know how many people have said that you aren't going to raise our taxes, but this is just going to revert into item seven on the agenda. I'll be speaking on that item also. Then, that's it. Well, I heard mention of Walmart in the background in our closed session. I wouldn't give them anything. Don't give them nothing. So they're going to ask for a lot of stuff. But just don't give them nothing. We never gave them nothing the last time. And that was during a tough time in this economy back then. Okay, that's it. That's all. I'm not speaking on item seven. Thank you.
Well, we'll welcome you back.
I forgot to say, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, sir.
Connie McConnell?
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. I usually just get up here and start talking. Tonight I have notes. Now I'm nervous because I have to look at my notes here. There are four main groups in Marietta, in downtown Marietta. They're all 501(c)(3). And the first one is the Historic Society. The next one is the MAC or Marietta Arts Council. The next one is Downtown Marietta Merchants and Property Owners Association, and then Market Nights. And I just wanted to state in the beginning that really our intention from all of these groups is to work on revitalizing our downtown Marietta, making it a great place to go, bringing art down there, bringing more commerce down there. So that's kind of what we've all been working on. And, excuse me. The Historic Society, of course, is put in the museum. We have to thank Patton and Nett Jennings for that very much. I hope you will all come by and see it. We have some new displays. It does show a lot about the Indians who were here before us. The next one is the Marietta Arts Council. It was formed in 2016 by two enterprising individuals, Casey Gerardo and Jessica Large. And they have gotten a lot done in this short time. The third one is our Downtown 395 Merchants Association, which was formed in 2019. And I wanted to talk about with both of those, some of the things that we have done. So the Merchants and Property Owners Association, they launched a growing and successful Market Night in downtown Marietta. They worked jointly with MAC to grow our local artist music scene through the launch and grow of open mic nights at the alleyway. They partnered with the City of Marietta to produce downtown Marietta maps to attract locals and visitors to our downtown. They partnered with the City of Marietta to update Wayfarer signs pointing visitors to our area. Downtown Marietta now has a landing page on the City of Marietta website. City of Marietta leadership now sends representatives to meet with the Downtown 395 after their monthly board meetings for collaboration and updates. Okay, you can see the, the vent here is that we do a lot of things with the city. And we have represented the interests of downtown merchants regularly at city council meetings. Well, maybe that's me. I don't know. But anyway, some of the things that the Arts Council has done, and we're just pointing these things out because sometimes we like to pat ourselves on the shoulders and say, hey, we've been successful. We have held open citizens' public forums with large groups of community-involved citizens. We are interested in hearing and documenting what the community has to say. We have done public art events. Oops, I'm out of time. So I will just say one more thing. A very wise person once told me that life is about intention, but creative life is paying attention to your intention. And that's what we're doing, folks, and we are revitalizing downtown.
Thank you so much for your effort on our downtown and on everyone's behalf. I know everyone loves it down there. So thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Clara? I can't do the last name. I'm so sorry.
Sure, you could state your last name for all of us. Yes.
I see my couple of. Okay, I'll forgive you. Well, good evening, Mayor Lisa DeForest and Mayor Protem Laurie Stone and city council members and staff. I just really want to say that, that I did attend the city manager's breakfast at Pachanga. And I was very, very impressed by Kim Summers' presentation. I thought that was amazing. And I was just so excited to see all the wonderful things that are coming up in our city. You know, as far as like even having the nursing school, having the Marietta Hot Springs as a nice tourist spot and all this other wonderful stuff that's coming up. And I really look forward and so excited to see everything happening. And even the infrastructure, you know, like the, the roads and so forth that are coming in. So I think you guys are all doing a magnificent job and I'm sure that it'll continue to do so. And that is basically my comment tonight. Oh, and also, another great thing, I mean, a na rep, is that it was wonderful to hear about all the housing and the affordable housing that's coming in too. And meeting your housing element numbers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk?
That concludes public comments.
Wonderful, wonderful public comments. Everybody, it was a very positive night of public comments. So it's, it's always nice to have that night, isn't it? Yes. So, all right, moving on to the consent calendar. Approval of items one through six. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Are there any requests from my fellow colleagues to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstaining from vote? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk? Are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
Call for a motion in a second from my colleagues? Wow, I beat you both.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk.
I apologize, Madam Mayor. I, I'm required to read something really quickly. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, which includes an introduction of ordinance number 588-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California, amending 2.48030 of the Marietta Municipal, of the Marietta Municipal Code, revising the regulations for Traffic Commission, regular meetings and finding of exemption from CEQA, and also ordinance number 589-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, amending Chapter 2.39.030 of the Marietta Municipal Code, revising the regulations for Library Advisory Commission, regular meetings and finding of exemption from CEQA. regular meetings, and finding of exemption from CEQA. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Glad you read that and not me. So, thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to our public hearings. Public hearing for adoption of solid waste rates. I would love to bring our Assistant City Manager, Kristen Crane. Are there any members of the city council that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none, we will move on to the staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I am Kristen Crane, Assistant City Manager. Item seven on your agenda this evening is a public hearing to consider the adoption of solid waste rates for trash and recycling. I want to start by providing some background for you on what brings this item before you tonight. As a municipality, one of the city's responsibilities is solid waste collection services. And to achieve this, the city has a longstanding, what we call an exclusive franchise agreement in place with Waste Management to provide solid waste collection services for both commercial and residential properties. I also want to acknowledge that here with us this evening, we have Art Marquez and Lily Caroa, who are representatives from Waste Management, and they will be also available to answer any questions that may come up at the end. So as a state, California is in the midst of nearly unprecedented change in the realm of solid waste disposal and recycling. Most of us in the room probably remember a time when we only had one can at our house that we brought out to the curb on Trash Day, a trash can. But back in 1989, there were sweeping changes made with the passage of AB 939, with very big goals of diverting trash from the landfill. And over the years, we've come to know and have become very used to different types of the recycling programs that we have in place today. And in the last 10 years, there have again been very significant changes in state law related to solid waste and recycling with the goal of continuing to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and most of the focus has been on organics recycling. For those who aren't familiar with that term, or organics, it generally means materials like green waste or yard waste, but also food waste and food-soiled compostable paper. So in terms of why organics have become such a target for increased recycling, this slide shows that about 52% of the overall waste stream in California that presently heads to landfills is organic in nature. So things like green waste, yard waste, food waste, paper, wood waste, et cetera. And in fact, according to the California Department of Recycling, which we also call them CalRecycle, Californians disposed of about 24 million tons of organic waste in 2018. So I was kind of curious. I didn't really know in my head what that might look like, so I made this slide for visual reference to try to explain what 24 million tons looks like. So it turns out that a small car is about one ton. So you could think about it as 24 million little cars. And if you do the math on how many people, there's about 40 million people in California, so about 60% of a little car, each person in California is generating inorganic waste each year. So, you know, just to kind of give you, give us all a perspective of what we're talking about. And organic waste in the landfill is the leading driver of methane gas emissions from the landfills, which is considered to be a very significant contributor to the changes in our climate. Californians throw away of that organic waste more than 6 million tons of food each year, and yet, at the same time, one in five Californians are considered food insecure, which means that they lack reliable access to sufficient nutritious and affordable food. So part of these sweeping changes in state law that I've mentioned relating to organics recycling, I want to share this chart here, the hierarchy of food recovery, which shows that diverting food waste from the landfill, there's a bigger goal of these state laws to reduce food waste further up the food chain, if you will, to eliminate what's called source reduction and feed hungry people. So source reduction is actually the most preferred goal for organics recycling, and I know I can certainly say I've been guilty of this, buying more food than my family can eat. And that sometimes means that we have to throw things away before it goes, you know, when it goes bad. And in that case, it's not just the methane that's generated from the food decomposing in the landfill, but it's also the sources that were involved in growing the food, the water, the energy, the fuel to transport the food to wherever it is that we buy it or eat it. So then the second most important goal is of these laws is aimed at feeding hungry people by way of redirecting food that otherwise would be eaten, that's thrown into the landfill, to diverting that to hungry people. So think of that like day-old bread, the baked goods, those little pre-made salads that you buy at the grocery store, working with the Costco, Starbucks, on all those packaged food items that are sold. And instead of diverting them to the landfill when they, it's a day old, having them be recovered and passed along to food pantries and things so that they can be passed to those who are food insecure. So as part of these laws, I'm going to talk about the part that's most prominent, but this is part of it as well, and part of what we as a city are having to then report on, comply on, work with food recovery organizations in our city. So as I said, these state laws, setting forth these requirements for all cities in California, and the California Department of Recycling, CalRecycle, is charged with overseeing it. They are in very close communication with us, with me here, the City of Marietta, checking on our status to implement these new requirements. And that's a great segue to the next topic, which, what is our status implementing these requirements here in Marietta? So organics recycling began for commercial and multifamily customers this past fall, and the rates for this service have already been accounted for. They were adopted by the city council back in the spring of 2019. So there are no increased rates proposed at this time for our multifamily and commercial customers. But next, Marietta needs to implement organics recycling for single-family residential customers, and we are on track to implement this as of April 1st, 2023, which is the reason we are here this evening. So in order to implement the new organics recycling service and a number of those other programs that are required in order for the City of Marietta to comply with state law, it does require a rate increase of $2.79 per month per house, which is just over $33 per year. Currently, each house is paying $25.75 per month for trash, green waste, and recycling combined for all three. And with the change, the rate increase will go up to $28.54 per month, again, for all three types of carts. This slide shows each of the three bins and the kinds of items that will be able to be disposed in each. The primary change that residents will experience is that the existing green waste bins that they have, that they put their yard waste in, will now, they'll now add their food waste to that bin, and food-soiled paper as well. So there's no fourth new bin coming. There will still only be three bins. And as I said, we are on track to implement this mandated service by April 1st, and that's why we're here, to have a public hearing about the adoption of the new rates that are associated with implementing this new service and the other programs that are required. So switching gears, I want to talk about the rate-setting process. Under state law in California, the process of setting rates for solid waste is established by law that we commonly refer to as Prop 218, and it requires holding a public hearing and notifying the public by mail 45 days in advance of the hearing regarding the proposed rate change. The notice for tonight's public hearing was mailed to all Marietta property owners and residents, excuse me, residences, on January 20th, 2023. And this is a sample of what that looked like, which included information on the proposed rate increase and also an educational flyer explaining the upcoming program change. And so as I mentioned earlier, there is no rate increase at this time for commercial or multifamily accounts because that rate was previously adopted back in spring 2019. The rate increase at this time for single-family residential customers is $2.79 per month. We did also include a list of all of the rates that are possible for commercial and multifamily. There's a whole bunch of different configurations depending upon the size of the bin and the frequency that you have it picked up. This was available on the city's website as well in full detail. So the franchise agreement with Waste Management allows for an annual adjustment based on Consumer Price Index, which typically occurs each fall. And as part of the mailed notice, it was also noted that we need to amend the language in the franchise agreement for the index that's used to calculate the CPI because of changes that there have been within the last few years for the actual indexes themselves. The present index that's stated in the franchise agreement is referred to as the Los Angeles-Anahime-Riverside Metropolitan Area Index, but that actually does not exist anymore. So the overall region was divided, and now the relevant index for our area in Marietta is Riverside-San Bernardino-Ontario Metropolitan Area Index, and we need to amend the franchise agreement to reflect that. And in order to do that, we needed to include it as part of this Prop 218 notice that was sent out and have this public hearing this evening. So per state law, the way the 218 process works is that the notice was mailed, as I said, it was mailed to 27,565 properties and residences. And in order for there to be what's called a 50% plus one majority to prevent moving forward with the proposed rate adjustment, we would have needed to have received 13,784 protests. And as of the beginning of this evening's council meeting, we had received three protests. There actually was, oh, I don't have it on, oh, I do have it on the slide. We received one late this afternoon after the slides were finished. The two that we received earlier in the day were included for you as attachment five in your packet. So that does conclude my overview of the proposed items for adoption by the city council. Again, as part of implementing these forthcoming changes, there will be very extensive outreach and education to the public to ensure that everyone feels really well informed on what goes in each respective bin. And we will also be bringing back an amendment to the franchise agreement in the very near future to memorialize some of these new requirements by the state as part of our contract with Waste Management. And our recommendation then is that the city council open the public hearing as required and take public testimony, accept any additional protests that there may be, close the public hearing, count all the written protests received, and then assuming that there is not a majority protest, you could proceed with adopting the resolution. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, Kristen Crane, for your great presentation on a very challenging subject, which I know that you got into a little bit later. So thank you so much for catching us up. I greatly appreciate that. Any questions from, all right, I'll go to Councilwoman Warren, and then I'll go to Councilman Holliday.
Thank you, Mayor. It states in there that the 96-gallon cart is, are all the green waste carts 96 gallons? Or I believe I've seen smaller ones. Is there a smaller fee increase for the smaller containers?
So, good question. For the most part, they are 96-gallon carts. And there are some circumstances where there are smaller carts. They're challenging operationally, but we also do have, within the rate structure, a provision for a lower income senior rate that provides for assuming as if it was a smaller container.
Okay, so is that a rate that seniors can apply for? Or is it something that they can? And how would they do that?
They will contact the city hall, me.
Well, that's good news. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your questions, Councilwoman Warren and Councilmember Holliday.
Under this state law that was passed, if we chose not to increase rates, and obviously then Waste Management would not perform their organic recycling, what is the penalty?
Thank you for the question. So CalRecycle, as I mentioned, is closely monitoring each city in California, and the law does allow them to issue a financial penalty to the city to the tune of $10,000 per day. I'm not aware that that's happened yet in any city. Marietta is actually currently on what's called a compliance action plan, where we have a timeline that we've had committed to them that we would be implementing these requirements, and they check in with me monthly on the status of that, both in phone and a written report.
I'm sure you love those reports.
Yeah.
And this is not a tax, correct? This is just an increased fee for services, additional services that the state is mandating that we do.
Correct. It's considered a fee for services used.
Okay. And in some of the protests, some of the complaints were of lack of service. What type of accountability does the city have with Waste Management regarding their service commitment?
Thank you. So we do occasionally receive calls from the public about different customer service issues that they have with Waste Management, and I communicate very regularly with our representatives, and I've found them to be really responsive. And we do have provisions within the franchise agreement if we had extenuating circumstances where they were not being responsive. But I was going to reach out to that individual as well, and I encourage the public, if you ever have a customer service issue, please feel free to call city hall, and we will work with Waste Management and address that.
Thank you. Tell my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Lavelle.
Just one quick point of clarity. So there's no, there will be no net increase to waste per household, and there's not going to be a new can, canister added. What, can you speak to what that fee is going to be covering? Is that the management fee of the segregation of the waste at the plant, or can you walk me through that?
Yes, actually, wonderful. So the, yes, the, by way of, now, the waste that folk, our community is putting into the green waste bin, it's currently yard waste. Now it's going to have food waste in it. Currently, the green waste goes to the El Sabrante landfill, and it gets incorporated into just the landfill practices there. Now it will have to be diverted to a facility that Waste Management uses, and there's a whole entirely different process for how it's handled and how it decomposes and becomes compost material. So part of the cost of that is that the service provided in order to do that. And then in addition, there's additional compliance requirements that Waste Management has in terms of monitoring and then helping us with some of these other requirements. I didn't, I know I was very detailed, but I actually tried to spare you and focus on the most salient points. But there are other requirements that the city has, like, we need to implement compost giveaway events in the city. And so those are kinds of things that Waste Management will be working on, and those costs are provide, are like, it's incorporated into that, that rate that the pay, the public is paying for the service.
Thank you. And then you mentioned the waste going to a treatment facility or a plant. Does Waste Management, the company, own that plant or location or site, or is that another company that does that?
No, they do. They do. I actually have, I have more information about that if you want it. I was prepared, but I leave it to your discretion. But they own that, they do own that plant. And Art is here as well and can also help answer questions if you want to talk.
No, I just want some high-level clarity on that operational class and what it was going to be going towards. No, this is, this is good. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So I have a couple of questions. Seeing that Mayor Protem doesn't have a question, so I will go next. Seeing, would this be considered an unfunded mandate coming down from the state of California?
Yes, I would characterize it as such.
Yes. And you love when the state of California places this on the backs of our citizens. Yes, that's awful. You don't have to answer that question. That is a statement of a statement, yes. And on that, to make a statement, so we have three cans right now, and we're going to continue to have three cans. So we're not increasing a can in front of a house, which I appreciate that because considering on garbage day, it looks chaos, chaotic anyway with three cans. But, so, is that waste still being taken, the green waste? Is that still going to Fresno, as I recall, out of our area? So this $2.80 is probably paying for gas to transport. And what about all that greenhouse emissions that my yard waste and food is now on the freeway, the five freeway heading for Fresno? Is that correct, where that's going?
I'd like to invite Art for to answer.
Where'd he go? Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just, that's where it was going when we passed commercial. I just think it's very important that constituents know that what the state of California is putting us through with respect to our waste.
So this is Art Marquez and Lily Caroa from Waste Management, and I will let the two of you decide which of you wants to answer the question. If you want those slides, Art, I have them.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. We're punting very well.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So to kind of clarify a little further, so it is still going to our facility up north. At this time, that is still the most affordable option. But with that being said, we do have local options that are presenting themselves and continue to get developed. So it is being transported. There is a cost to that, but it's still the lowest cost. And on top of that as well, the trucks that are being utilized, it's not.
Electric.
Electric trucks, right? But they're also, they're, they're not as much or as frequent as I think people are being led to believe, so they're, it's a So they're, it's efficiently being collected and being gathered and then transported. But again, that's with local options constantly presenting themselves as well.
Well, I hope some local options come forth very soon, so. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I just want to add, absolutely, the South Valley facility, as Art mentioned, is the most cost-effective. But it's also, there's very minimal, if at all, options, especially here in this region. We do not have options. There's multiple composting facilities, but they're not permitted to accept food waste. So therefore, they're not SB, this new law, approved infrastructure. I mean, this is a regulation, unfortunately, that I keep on saying, but they basically put the cart in front of the horse.
I was just going to say that.
There's not enough infrastructure to support the demand of this regulation. So at this point, we are proposing the most, even though it is a distance away, it's still the most cost-effective option for the residents. We are working, we actually have a dedicated team to work on identifying opportunities. That is something that, on a yearly basis, we'll be working with Kristin to basically evaluate, what are those options? They are coming down the pipeline, but as we all understand, we all live in this region with AQ and D permitting is extremely difficult. So we're trying to get through all those hurdles, and once those options come in line, we'll be coming and talking to the city about those options. So in the near future, maybe there'll be something closer.
I appreciate that. Thank you both for being here tonight. I greatly appreciate it. Councilmember Holliday.
On that note, if there are local opportunities in the next several years that come available, because as you said, the state put the cart before the horse, so people didn't have the opportunity to ramp up to be prepared for this. If a less costly option becomes available, will that get passed through to the residents?
Yeah, that will be part of the process, is analyzing this fee structure and seeing what it costs. I also want to point out, caution you, that even though it's closer, doesn't mean it's going to be more, or I should say cheaper, because the closer we come, the regulations get tougher. The facility that we currently have is out in Central Valley with farms, so we're able to have open rows composting facility. If there was something permitted closer, where, closer to our cities, you know that the permitting efforts and requirements are going to be a lot more, which means that it's more expensive to run, which means that I'm not going to, I'm not making you promise that it's going to be a lot cheaper, because I don't know what that's going to represent. So I also want to caution that.
I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Any other questions? Thank you so much for the presentation this evening. I appreciate it. All right. At this time and place, this will be, it's time for the public hearing of the adoption of solid waste rates. I now open the public hearing. Has the city clerk, has the city clerk received any written protests filed against the trash fee increases?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To reiterate, the city clerk received three pro, three written protests. Two of them were attached to the agenda report. One was received after 3 o'clock today, and that was placed on the dais for the council to review.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the city council on this matter or hand in any protest or correspondence? If so, please come to the podium. When you come to the podium, please state your name, address, and present your comments.
Good evening. My name is Teri Doe. I am a resident here, and I just have a few questions. I really appreciate your questions for Ms. Crane, that, and also this gentleman, Mr. Lavelle. So when you're saying that you are not really increasing the number of bins, and yet you're increasing the $2.89, I am opposing that, even though I'm in support of this whole program. So may I make some suggestions? Like, help each resident to have a compost facility in the backyard to increase the quality of her soil, instead of shipping it all the way to wherever. So I believe that's a lot more cost-effective. Another thing I have the concern about is pests. And if you're combining yard waste, and very often our gardeners do not, oh, this stuff, the bins too full, and you can't really close them completely. So now we're going to have pest, a problem. So that's something that really concerns me, and I would like you to reconsider and see if we can propose something better than combining the waste, the food waste, and the yard waste. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Anyone else like to speak? Come forward, sir.
Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, Roger Manso from the Gulf Knolls, our little venture up on the hill. I just came down here to listen, and I love what the program has to offer. The only problem that we have as a senior community is to look at the dollars and cents. So I wanted to offer to our Waste Management an idea, since you brought it up. We have our own agricultural programs in the local area, and I'd like to know why we're not utilizing them with the food, the organic food, for our pigs, our goats. There are different communities around here that can use that, and we could sell it. And I'm sure there's money to be made on it. The other program is, if we're going to a three-barrel system, then what we're looking at is saving money for the Waste Management people. So if we were saving their money by separating everything, how come that savings is not coming back to us as a community? And that's all I wanted to present to you, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Is there anyone else?
Okay. Okay. Unfunded government mandate. I heard that tonight. That's what it is. And that's exactly the reason why you can say no to this. That, and, it's a tax increase. It's a tax increase, Ron, I'm honest with you. Waste Management puts things on our tax rolls. I don't know how they do that without a 218 vote, but they do it. It's like mom and pop grocery store saying, well, we're going to tax us this since Marietta, this much money. Taxes on our taxes. Well, wait a minute, they can't do that. That's right. I don't know how Waste Management can, because they charge us for vacant property to pick up trash every year, same as anybody else picking up trash. They charge us for vacant properties. And then if you tell them, sorry, I don't want my trash picked up, I'll take it to the dump. I'll take my trash to the dump. Well, that's tough. You're still going to pay us. You have to pay them, Waste Management. Now, I got something on my bill today. I got a question. I can't quite read it, because it's not light enough in here, but it says something about the top, maybe.
Recyclable material offset.
Recyclable material offset. What's that? They just added that to my bill. Now, that goes on my taxes. If I don't pay my taxes, then they can foreclose on my property, believe it or not. They can foreclose on people, people's houses, because they're on the tax rolls. How they got that in there, I have no idea. It was before I was on the council, I know that, but they did. And I, to this day, I don't know. Okay, now, that's, what was that charged for? You just charged more money for recyclable, what was it? Recyclable.
Recyclable material offset.
They just, they just sent, put some more money on my bill. Recyclable offsets. I don't know what that is. It's just a bill with money. I don't know. They want it. I gotta, they upped the bill. Now they're going to up it again. They're going to up it again. And you guys can say, no. I don't see nothing wrong with saying no. Government unfunded mandates, they're all day long. You just got to say no to them. And then if they want to sue you, then you say, sorry, well, you unfunded it. It's a government mandate. Okay, now, Waste Management, let me see. They donate to campaigns. I know that. Perfect. Now, I never took their money. I sent it back, because I said, I don't want to be beholden to nobody. I took, sent everybody's money back, believe it or not. Okay, now, it's getting too late here. But I, I don't know what, other than it being a tax, it's a tax. It's literally a tax.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Welcome.
And my wife has graciously allowed me to have her three minutes as well. I don't think I'm going to need it, but it was kind of nice of her to do that. I, I want to, as you know, I rarely come back to this room on purpose. I spend a lot of time here as well and such, but it's this one, I was kind of guilted into it. I won't say who, but I was a bit guilted into this because of the institutional knowledge I do have when it comes to this discussion. I am not really, it's not my purpose to impugn anybody from Waste Management tonight. They're good people, just doing their job and things, but there is a discussion that we need to have. And before I get into my point, I just want to make it clear that my position is, I don't think you have a choice here with the state mandates that are, that are in place, moving the gold post all the time about diversion rates and everything else. I know as a citizen of Murrieta, if I found out the city council made a choice to put me vulnerable to $10,000 a day, I'd have a problem with that. Do I like this, this increase? No. It's a couple of bucks. When I first saw that, it was like, well, it's a couple of bucks, I'll get new trash cans. We're okay with that, because I really need new trash cans badly. But, but when I saw the reason for it having to do with the diversion rates, it just kind of clicked something for me that I want to talk about real, kind of quick here, within my hopefully three minutes or a little bit more. On my watch, when I sit on your side of the dais, went through many discussions with Waste Management about the contracts and things, and the increases, more often than not, that were asked for, the different changes that were asked for, always had, well, I won't say always, I won't exaggerate, but it seemed like most, if not all, times, had the caveat that it was needed for diversion rates to be kept up with. And, and so what was needed was the increase to buy better equipment, to, to create a local facilities, to create the kind of facilities necessary to do what needs to be done for the diversion rates to be effective, and so on and so forth. And that was, I was told in my discussions with them prior to the votes on those things, because this is never a popular vote, that if we just had those increases, that we would have a local facility, or we would have a, the equipment necessary and so forth and so on. But in spite of those increases, to my knowledge, those assurances have never been realized. They were never realized on my watch, and I don't think that's been realized since. Maybe I'm wrong about that. Right now, you're right. I was in Central Valley last week, coming back from Central Valley, had to divert because they closed the grapevine, so my four-hour trip became nine hours. I did not appreciate that. But I drove right by the facility as a result of that. And, and I, I was reminded about how far they have to take our, our stuff up there to, to do the thing that makes this stuff that we can use. And then when we need that back here, when we purchase that, it costs more, because, well, they got to bring it back so far. And it seems like we're being punished for that as a result, and I, you know, so I have an issue with that. But when we are on the situation, when it comes to diversion rates themselves, if we don't meet those, those daily issues, I mean, on the diversion rates, we're going to get fined. Eventually, we're going to be, we don't want to be the target city for that. Murrieta is already, you know, in the focus of many folks, and so it very easily for me to see us, for the first time the fines that happen is going to come to us. Having said that, I don't put all of that on Waste Management. It's a dance between our citizens and their, you know, Waste Management provides a service, but we've still got to do our thing with the three trash cans. And now they've changed a little bit about how that's going to be going. So now there's the education of our citizens, and I get all that. So when it comes to meeting the diversion rates, I get that dance. My conclusion, or my angst on this right now, is I'm less sympathetic about the issues of diversion rates on the Waste Management side, when I haven't seen what was promised. I haven't seen a local facility built. I haven't seen what the, the equipment brought in. I haven't seen those kinds of things that we've been talking about for 20 years to get happened here. And while I don't think you have a choice about this, this rate increase, I am going to encourage you to do one thing. There's the amendment that's being discussed about the franchise agreement. I'm not exactly sure how much leeway you have, but I would sincerely encourage that during the discussions of that amendment, that, I would encourage you to include in those discussions a very substantive solution to put in place by Waste Management, to finally do what they said they would do 20 years ago. Some, some kind of a discussion that would come up with a solution that says, okay, from now on, we're going to, we're going to take this money, and we're going to show you how we're taking this money to apply to X, Y, and Z, the actual things we need in this region. I get it, it's not, it's not an easy solution, but I have every confidence in your staff. They've always been great around here. I have every confidence in staff to get together with Waste Management and find a way to yes. There's got to be a solution, so that when we're, we're adding $2.79 to every house in our, in our city, and we're doing that, we are showing them that, well, we're doing that, and here's what we're going to get. It's just not more of the same. So I know it's a difficult discussion, but my hope is that I still get my trash cans now that I've said this, and as a result, but I'm also encouraging you to say, I don't think you have a choice about the solution you come up with, but at the end of the day, let's find out next, let's don't perpetuate this any longer. Let's find ways, get ways, the solutions, find a way to yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And you did use your wife's time, so. All right. Anybody else? Any more comments?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Does any member of the city council have any comments or questions? Mayor Potem, Stone.
Kristin, I want to thank you so much for your presentation, and Art and Lilly, it's lovely to see you always. I'm extremely frustrated with the unfunded mandates that are coming down from the state of California that is on the backs of the residents. And when do we stand up and fight and say enough is enough? Mrs. Doe, I agree with you. I'm definitely in favor of SB 1383. Unfortunately, it's been said that it's the cart before the horse, and that's typically what Sacramento does, is that they do these unfunded mandates, and they don't put the infrastructure in first, or don't even allow time for our agencies to put the infrastructure in place for us. And former mayor and council member McAllister, I agree with you. It's, it's frustrating to know that the state of California can implement a $10,000 a day fine. And as a business owner from the private sector, whether I represent in elected capacity or a private sector, that's a huge hit for any business to take. But again, somebody has to stand up and fight for the residents, and I'm going to fight for the residents. I think Waste Management should absorb the $2.78 and not impose that on our residents. I'm frustrated with the state of California. This is not going to be the last unfunded mandate that comes down the pipeline. Put your seat belts on, because there's more than 3,000 bills being proposed right now in the state legislature, and we have no idea how that's going to impact our city. So I hear you. I'm frustrated, and definitely with the, with the inflation that's going on today, this is, it's another $1.78 or $1.98, or $2.98 in the cost of eggs, the cost of, of our SoCal gas, our electricity. It's very frustrating, and I want to thank Art, and I want to thank Kristin also for going with me to the colony. And it's really, really sad when I have to hear seniors that have to choose of diabetes medication or paying their SoCal gas bill. It's, it's a very sad state of time today. And I just want to let you know that I am. And I just want to let you know that I am as frustrated as you are, and I'm going to continue to fight for the residents of Marietta. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, and Councilmember Holliday.
I just wanted to follow up with some questions, some stuff that was brought up. How do unpaid, sorry, how do unpaid trash bills end up on property taxes?
Do you want me to answer that one?
Sure.
The city must have adopted an ordinance at some point. There is a government code section that allows cities to do that because the city's municipal code requires properties to have trash service.
And that bypasses 218?
No, the 218 is the process to set the rates, and that's what happens if someone doesn't pay the trash bill. That's the remedy, so that the trash company that's providing the service gets paid.
And I have a second question for you, actually. Does the law, this new law, allow for self-composting? Are you aware?
It does, but that doesn't allow you to opt out. It encourages it, I believe.
It encourages you to self-compost, but you still have to pay the fee that, for the service you're not using. That makes all the sense in the world.
I mean, it could be, it's a new law, and everyone's just adjusting to it, and so right now, I don't think there's a category to opt out of it, but it could be that eventually that is something that's an option.
Do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I'd like to add is that we do have a waiver system that we're working out with the city, so if you do feel that you're going to apply for a waiver specifically with the city, you can, or commercial?
That's commercial.
Excuse me, so there's a commercial option, and they would be able to opt out depending on the waiver that's been approved by the city?
Let me correct.
Sure.
And I apologize. What he meant was, on a commercial, if a commercial has a third party, many of our larger, like, markets, targets, and so forth, that produce a lot of cardboard, they have a system in place where they backhaul, and they're ready recycling. So that is how they're able to opt out and provide a waiver. On the residential side, I do agree. It's a new law. Maybe in the future, there can be some more understanding of opting out if there is someone that decides to home compost, but at this time, Cal Recycle's mandate is that every city needs to have a permitted facility. That's the key. Needs to be taken to a permitted facility that is able to take in food waste, and it ties to a lot of the stuff that Kristin didn't mention tonight, because there's a lot more to this law that wasn't discussed today. It is reporting, reporting of where we take it. It's reporting from the facilities. The facilities are going to be audited. So it is a very comprehensive laundry list of obligations that comes with this regulation, and part of that is that Cal Recycle's mandating that food waste gets taken to a permitted facility. So home composting at this point would not check the box for a city as compliance.
Understood. And the question that, or the comment that former councilmember McAllister raised about the local source plan, I know we talked about it a little bit, that it could come in the future, but there's nothing definitive in this agreement that says in five years we'll have a local source.
You know, as agreements come, there's confidentiality that I can't speak right now, but I can tell you that in the very near future, there's going to be options closer. Like, next year, I can be talking about new facilities that are in this region.
Okay. And in the rate negotiations, was this a net neutral to Waste Management?
Are you speaking to the 279?
Yes.
Absolutely. This is the cost of taking the material and the laundry list of obligations that we have to do. This is not a money-making for us. It's really to add to the service and get the city in compliance, and we are really presenting the least cost-effective. We even took it one step further. We presented those rates back in 2021. We honor the rates from 2021, even though the gate fees, everything, as we all know, have increased. We opted not to go back and recalculate it. We are honoring 2021 rates. So it's not a money-making for us. We speak to processing, but if you only understood the laundry list of obligations that come with this, I know that our staff, my staff, is overwhelmed with the countless requests from Cal Recycle in terms of reporting, data mining, case management, the education that's going to come into play. There's a lot that comes with this law, so this is not a money, this 279 is not making us any money.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. You asked all the questions I was going to ask except for one.
It's more of a comment. I agree. It seems like 279 is not a big deal, but to a lot of our seniors, it is a huge deal. And I urge our community, if you are a senior citizen, to please make that phone call, find out what you can do to get that reduced. That's how you can help yourself. You are asking our citizens to do your job, and then you're charging them for it. I know we're mandated to do this, and we, our hands are tied. I don't like it one bit, and I'm sorry, I just don't like it, but I'm sure you don't like it either. So I want to thank you for your reports, for being honest and upfront with all of us, and let's move forward to that. This fee doesn't go up any further anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I've been in California now for almost 20 years, and this is exactly the kind of thing that I get phone calls from my friends in Texas saying, what is going on in California, and what are you guys doing about it? And this, I think I share the sentiment with frustration from, I think, everyone's viewpoint of, you know, you guys are a company doing business, and there's a cost, and we've seen inflation hit about every part of every sector imaginable, and this is probably no different. Not to mention, it's an added literal statement of work for you guys to do physical work. I'm not saying I like it or agree with it, it's just, it is what it is, and it's added requirements from the state. The, Mrs. Doe, that had mentioned the composting, I think that's a great idea. I think, you know, the soil, adding back to the soil and using that as a way to be regenerative for, you know, all aspects of how farming works. The caution I have with that would be, there's a lot of apartments and condos here, and, you know, you spoke about pests. I can tell you from my own composting experiments, it does attract squirrels and rats and rabbits, and I think that's great, but it probably isn't going to be a big fix for what they're trying to address here. And again, I appreciate Kristin for having all the, I'm sure, long-winded conversations, and Waste Management for doing what you can with which you have, and it's not a fun discussion for sure, when anything gets increased in terms of fees, but hopefully we'll find a resolve in the future and then continue to provide good service to the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, I don't have a second?
Do I have a second? Don't everyone jump at once. Thank you, Councilmember Warren.
Reluctantly.
We're all going to have our names on this, and our protest, yeah. Thank you.
I didn't abstain. I didn't touch anything.
Okay, Councilmember Warren, you did not mean to abstain. What is your vote?
It's yes.
It's yes? Okay. Motion carries unanimously, 4-1, with Mayor Potem Stone dissenting.
Thank you so much. Discussion, request by Mayor Potem Stone for funding for a legislative advocacy trip to Sacramento. Staff, may we have a report?
Good evening. Again, mayor and councilmembers coming at you from this direction. So at your last council meeting, there was a request by Mayor Potem Stone for funding for a legislative advocacy trip to Sacramento. And so in accordance with the new practice that you actually set up at the last meeting, that when a councilmember introduces an item, we would bring it back to you for discussion, we have prepared something for you to discuss. We did do some mathematical estimating on the cost for a trip to Sacramento, which was included in your agenda report, that the cost would be $1,100 for a two-day, one-night trip, based on the estimates for flight and meal, hotel, transportation, and so forth. And with that, I will turn it back to Mayor Potem Stone, if you have anything you'd like to add, and the rest of the council.
Thank you so much, Assistant City Manager Kristin Crane. As stated before, that I think it's very important that the residents of Marietta have a voice, and Darcy Burke, who was the board member of Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, had invited me to go to Sacramento to lobby for forest maintenance and also for storage and capture and storage facilities in the state of California to capture the water. I do not plan on staying for one night or two days. I would love to fly up just for the day and spend the day with the water agencies and advocating for the infrastructure and the forest management that is desperately needed. And as stated in the last presentation, is, it's frustrating that with the unfunded mandates that are coming down the pipeline, and those that we've already approved, and the amount of money that is on the backs of our residents, I would like to offer the opportunity to go to Sacramento and fight, not just for the residents of Marietta, for actually for the residents of the state of California. And again, it would just be a one-day trip up and back. That concludes my comments. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Do I have any comments from the dais? Councilwoman Warren?
She forgot who I was. She did. I know she did. Mayor Potem Stone, if she is inviting you or wanting you to go with her, is there a possibility that her organization could cover that cost?
That was never discussed. She said, would you like to come and represent the city of Marietta? So I did not ask her that.
Okay. I just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
I have a, Councilmember, I have a question. Do we have a date for this?
So it was scheduled for the, for March, but it's been postponed to the end of April now.
And is this a program that, like Rancho spoke of today, will be participating in this?
Yes. My understanding is that all the water agencies in the state of California will be going up on this particular day to lobby. Yes.
Okay. And so will we have a platform, so we'll lobby for Marietta issues? Because I get that we have water issues, but we need to be specific on what Marietta needs with, will we have a platform?
Mayor, I think that that is a great suggestion, and, you know, if we want to, we can have another discussion, or we can have the discussion. I don't know if our fellow colleagues have had an opportunity to think about, you know, the type of lobbying that we should do, but yes, I mean, if you're going to send me up there, I say, let's just tackle it all.
Should we also maybe meet with our local or our potential or our current lobbying group to help utilize them?
Well, you know, that is a great suggestion, in being that I'm going to bring that up in my proposal for future agendized items, and being that our lobbyist does not lobby at the state level and only at the federal level, now can we have a conversation with them? Absolutely.
I will take a...
Sorry, mayor.
Sorry.
So actually, our lobbyists do cover us at the state level. After our last session, there were multiple requests, so we have added that to our contract.
Perfect. Then absolutely. I think it's very important, and one of the things that I had suggested in our meeting with Townsend two weeks ago was being able to partner with them, not just allowing our lobbyists to go to Washington, DC and lobby for whatever issues, but definitely still at the state level. I think it's very, very important that our legislators see the electeds up there in partnering with our lobbyists. So absolutely, I would love for them to give me guidance.
So if I could make a suggestion, since I do think it's a great idea that we go and lobby, and that we expand on what's needed here in Marietta, and could we possibly, maybe myself and Mayor Potem, meet with our lobby group for that and actually put together a plan? Instead of just maybe sending one person up, why don't we see what we can do as a group, right? Because we can move a mountain as a group.
I absolutely love your suggestions.
Okay. So let's, can, so how do we go about that? Madam City Attorney, do we table this and bring it back?
Probably be best.
Okay. Okay, so since we have time, and the march was canceled, we can table this to the next meeting and bring this back with a little bit more information and a better action and game plan. How's that sound? Good with you? Okay? Thank you. All right. Councilmember Holliday, did you have a comment? I'm sorry.
I had a couple of questions, but you asked them, and they were answered, and your suggestion was exactly in line with what I was going to suggest.
I guess great minds think alike, sir. So thank you so much. All right. Well, moving on. Oh, excuse me. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So I just have a quick question. So are we just continuing it to the next meeting or to a date to be determined?
We will continue it, continue it to a date to be determined, so we can make sure we have enough time.
And we have consensus on that?
All those in favor? Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor? Yes? Aye?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Maybe she could drive up a truck full of green waste.
I knew that was coming.
Hey, order in the court here. Councilmember Lavelle. All right. Where am I? Okay, here I am. Governing body announcements. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this, at this time, we will hear governing body announcements, which is the opportunity for the city council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. Councilmember Warren?
Thank you. I'm going to receive and file. The city will have it up on the website. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to call or email me at any time. Thank you so much. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Warren.
Councilmember Lavelle?
No, I was thanking her. Yes. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you. I didn't get this report in because the event I went to was today, but just FYI, I went to the Riverside County State of Education address from our superintendent. It was a lunch meeting, and they talked about the four initiatives they have, they had, and I was happy to hear that they have a pretty strong mental health initiative going on to just add services and just kind of highlight the need for the schools and what they're going to, what they're going to be putting into the, I think it was 56 total schools in Riverside County. So glad to be there and glad to see my fellow superintendent, Dr. Ward was there, and then some board members as well from Marietta. So nice day.
Thank you. Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you. I attended the city manager's breakfast, which there was not a single person that didn't praise our city manager for her presentation and a job well done, so we thank you for that. Keep up the amazing work. Attended on the 27th, the Southwest California Legislative Council. If, people don't know what that is, it's a combination of a lot of political organizations, elected officials, not elected officials, but business people in the community that get together and they look at all the bills that the state is proposing, and they come out and vote on a position for or against and explain it. It's a very informative meeting. There are a lot of things every year. There are a lot of things every year coming down the pipe, like this one that we've been talking about tonight for the trash that came before them and that they opposed. So it's, it was a ton of good information, and they're opposing some and hoping some get passed, very few. And then I had my second meeting with the resident who started the Bring Back SANA organization, and we're at the point where we need to talk about whether we're going to move that forward or not, and I'll bring that up in the next section.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. Councillor, or Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You can view all of my meetings on our website, and I want to let you know that there's quite a few, because I had deferred my governing body announcements for a few meetings, so there's quite a list. But there's one particular meeting that I would like to share with you, is the Southwest Homeless Meeting that was facilitated by Supervisor Washington, and I want to give kudos to Brian. Brian was brutally honest about the lack of resources that are happening in Marietta with regards to our homeless, and they heard his words. In addition, one particular area, when it comes to grants or funding for homeless, as you know that when we remove somebody from the street, by law, we have to provide a bed. And we've already discussed, you know, the issues with the county with regarding not having enough beds, but the one issue that is not discussed, nor do I believe that there are grants out there, and that is the cleanup of encampments, especially in Marietta Creek, which is a public safety issue. I did bring that up at the meeting, and based on what Supervisor Washington had stated, it sounds like that he's going to be working with Brian and flood control, and hopefully he will grant us a half a million dollars to go in there and clean up Marietta Creek. In addition, I got a phone call after our meeting from Supervisor Washington's office about wraparound services. So when we go down there and we are cleaning up, if there are homeless people down there, that they will bring a team out to work with Brian and his team in encouraging these homeless population with these wraparound services. So that concludes my governing body announcements. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You can also see my... Yeah.
City's website.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. You can see, yes, but I was waiting for them to come up. Yes, you can also see my announcements on the city's website, as well as on the screen before you. And also just want to, if you need to reach me, my phone number and email is there, please reach out to me. Faster response, call or text, that is my personal cell number. So I thank you for having some great meetings with all of you, and it's been fun to participate as well as a group with some of the grand openings as such. So, moving on, thank you for helping me out. Crystal. Councilmember requests to add additional items or items to future agendas. Are there any requests for any councilmembers requesting to add items to the future agendas? We'll start with Councilmember Holiday, since you mentioned it, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm starting with you.
Thank you. And it's, it's at the council's discretion where we want to just have consensus on this, or you want to bring it back and discuss it at a, at a future meeting. The SANA stops are at a point that I need to engage staff, and so we need, as a council, before we start spending staff time and money, to decide if that's something that this council as a whole wants to move forward with. So it's your discretion whether you want to have consensus on that today, or if you want to bring it back and discuss it.
Well, is it, so we can't have consensus today? We can have, you can say, if you're going to pursue it, there'd be an item to talk about it, or if no one's interested in talking about it, then...
So it has to be an agenda item?
Unless no one's interested in pursuing it, and then it can just be done.
So it will have to be an agenda item?
So I have a question. Madam City Attorney, can we discuss anything about that now? Or no, we just, yes or no?
You can discuss if a majority of you are interested in putting it on a future agenda, and if the presumption of not, if a majority is not in favor, is that it's not something people are in favor of?
All right.
And it can be dropped.
Okay. So with that said, do we take a vote?
So you could just, he's raised it, and so do two other people?
Is there anybody else that would like to bring it forward?
I, I would like to bring it forward also. I'd like to hear what they've done and what they want to do.
Okay. We will see that bringing forward. Thank you so much. In a future agenda. Councilmember Warren?
No, I have nothing.
No? Councilmember Lavelle?
I have nothing.
And Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very excited to hear that Townsend is now going to be our lobbyist at the state level. As I'm doing meet and greets and I'm out in the community, the number one complaint that I get from the residents is, we didn't know about SB 1383, the organic waste. We don't know about the, the legislation that's coming down about public safety, and this is the number one complaint. And what I would love to do is, is agendize two things. I would love to talk about legislation from the deists that is going to affect the residents of Marietta. I think it's important, it's not about taking a position, that's not our role, or, or we could, but at least it's just another layer of communication to our residents of what's coming down the pipeline. In addition, maybe having people go to our website that also talks about legislation. And in addition, I would love to see us be more proactive in partnering with our lobbyists in DC and in Sacramento. And if we could agendize the discussion to talk about a line item of a budget, if, if the need comes and we do need to partner with our lobbyists, like we may be doing in Sacramento, we still, I feel like we just need to be more of a voice for our residents. So I'd like to agendize those two things, and then I have one more, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. In, in the end of January, each mayor does a, a goal session meeting, and they talk about their goals as the mayor, and what their theme is, and then we talk about our individual goals, and also goals as, collectively as a council. And one of the items that I brought forward was a citywide beautification project, basically cleaning up our, our community. And I've had conversations with waste management, and I would like to agendize dates for the last quarter of, of the year, and, and vote, and have a discussion, have staff also engage with us, and then set a date, and also have waste management come monthly to give us an update of the outreach and what that's going to look like. That concludes my three requests.
All right, so I might need a little help if I get this wrong, but the first is, Mayor Protem Stone would like legislation that's pertinent to our community and our constituents placed on the agenda for talking points.
So this is proposed legislation?
This is, this is... This proposed legislation, so like SB 1383?
Well, okay, that was adopted like three years ago, but...
I'm just using that because people don't realize that until right now.
But that one we could tell people about.
Right.
If it's proposed legislation, we have to be really careful about campaign, that people are going to take it as an opportunity to campaign and use the public resources, you know, it's on TV, it's being broadcast. You can have something on an agenda to take a position as the council.
Okay.
But if you're not going to take a position and you're just talking about it, that could get you dangerous.
So your recommendation is that if there's proposed legislation that's going to affect the city of Marietta, that it's recommended that we take a position?
If there's something that needs to be brought up, otherwise it should be more about educating the public about new legislation that's been adopted.
That's already been adopted.
Okay, I, okay, so can we, so I like to bring that, that's a very interesting point of view, and I think that we should definitely have a discussion of the avenue approach that we want to take on this.
Do we have a consensus that this is something we want to bring forward?
Would, would Townsend be the appropriate kind of leader for that discussion?
Not necessarily, no.
So it would be the council leading the presentation of all the adopted bills?
I mean, I think it's very important that we do engage our lobbyists, yes, or we really don't have to, because like Ron said, Ron and I attend the ledge meetings, we are very privy to the legislation that's coming down the pipeline, and again, it's about educating the community, either taking a position, because we're not allowed to educate them on, on what's coming down the pipeline, correct?
What you could do, if you get stuff from that meeting, you could ask it to be put on social media and shared. It's when there's conversation about it that could be considered campaigning, like war against it, that that could be where it could get tricky.
And I, and I see your point, so maybe...
I, I see, I see the agenda item more as a communication, discussion about how we communicate about those things, and I would support that agenda item.
I also see the issue of our meetings going till midnight.
This is just a set of policy, not to discuss it every time.
Yeah, yes.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, could we simply push out, so we provide a legislative report monthly to the city council? Could, is that what, we could just push out instead?
I would love, I, yes, I think that would be fantastic.
Okay, how would you want that pushed out? Via social media, through the More Marietta? We could attach a link?
So can, can we do an actual update here from the deists? Who, so I know that we have a rotating, the body rotates and works with the legislation, I'm assuming it's Kristin now?
Yeah, that, that position's been vacant for quite some time, we're currently recruiting for it, but Kristin's been a trooper and stepped in and is trying to fill that void.
Is it possible that Kristin could present bills that could affect the city of Marietta? It's just really... Just a, a report out? Is that acceptable, City Attorney?
Could I, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, may I make a, a comment on that and a question? So if, if the criteria is a bill that could potentially affect the city, that's any of them. So I think it would be helpful for staff, if you could narrow that down, if there are specific bills, that would be helpful for us, or something that's already been adopted. But just to say, hey, we want, you know, information on anything, I'm not sure how we'd prepare that.
You know what? And I agree with the mayor, we would be here till midnight, and that's not the point of this.
The ledge committee recommends which ones you'd like pushed out.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, so maybe we could put that on a request, you know, like the legislative committee would come and put it on, at the next meeting, I would like to have a few bills brought forward. And we could do that at the agenda, you know, I'd like, would that work, Madam City Manager?
Yeah, we, I would appreciate a little more lead time, just because the agenda, agendas are due tomorrow for the next meeting, but we could, we'll do our best to get it on the next one, but...
Well, not, maybe not the next.
It might have to be the one after that.
You know, because government is slowly...
As soon as we can. Yeah, there, nothing's going to happen overnight.
Madam Mayor, can we, can we at least just agendize this to have a discussion about it? And, and now that our city manager and our city attorney kind of understand the goal and the objective here, we can actually have a, a open discussion and, and create a policy for this? Or not necessarily a policy, but direction, I guess? Or no?
You definitely can do whatever you would like to do. I don't think that we need a policy to push out information, because we do push it out. We just...
We just don't do it from the deists.
Right, and they, and there hasn't been a lot of activity because they haven't been in session. So as things start to pick up, which they will start picking up, the League of California Cities supplies us with an update of all of those things. We usually turn around and then give them back to you to share at your legislative meetings. And so what we could do is, just as a standard practice, we can, I'll work with our public information officer to create a link in the More Marietta newsletter, and then, you know, if the council wants to make a request to bring back certain legislation, we certainly can. It would help, the more specific that you could be...
Yeah, I think that that's a great idea, to push it out to the More Marietta, just a link with some legislative information on it, and...
Just, I, for my clarification, due to the high volume of what gets constantly flowed down from Sacramento...
Right.
Are you saying only new bills? Because Pat, so new bills that have passed, but how would you define new, I guess? Because, I mean, like tonight, we have the waste one that's been, you know, a couple of years old, so...
Right.
How would we manage that?
So, so basically, two years ago, after it was voted on, again, our residents until January had no idea that this was coming down the pipeline, so, and, and Kim, I'm just...
No, I'm, but, but just... He did do a public information campaign on that. At the time, the question is, I mean, we can, we love to push out information, so we'll push out as much information as you'd like us to. It's, how often are we going to provide updates on things like that? I guess as they change, well, we'll just pay Townsend...
And again, I want you to know that the city did a phenomenal job on that outreach, but it's amazing when I'm, I'm out there and people are like, still have no clue. And I'm not even saying, talking about it from the deists is going to educate more people that are unfamiliar, but you listen, if we could reach a few people that have no idea of the legislations coming down the pipeline, I just feel like we're, we're doing our job.
I, I would agree, but I think too, some legislation, you know, we need to maintain neutral when we're sitting up here, and I think that may, like our city attorney said, we may have a bias, and therefore, you know, it's not a clear message either.
And I, I agree with Councilmember Lavelle, there was close to 2,000 bills signed by the governor last session, and if the city manager and our PIO are putting a link to 2,000 bills that are signed in a short window, that's not going to be effective communication.
I don't want to read 2,000 bills.
I don't either. I, I don't think that our...
It's probably illegal what we're doing right now because of one of them.
Right, I...
Excuse me?
There's nothing going on that you guys are talking about that you're going to take a vote on, that it would be subject to the Brown Act, or I would have stopped you, but yeah, this is...
Ms. Crane? Well, yes, I was going to offer that at your last meeting, you discussed your legislative platform, and you may recall, I mentioned how we use that operationally, is as there's legislation that's making its way through the process, that fits with that legislative platform, with the, you know, it's, the council's already said, you know, this, these are things you would want to support or oppose, and then we, we send letters. So that's, that's the kind of information that goes into that legislative update that Kim is mentioning. So it's, we're not monitoring 2,000 bills. We don't have the staff capacity to do that, but the League of California Cities is super helpful, Townsend will be super helpful, to helping us drill in on the bills that are most relevant to the city. And so that's the kind of information that would be posted on our website. That's actually been our practice, having that information on the website about the bills that we've been opposing in the past. So that's, you know, if that's helpful for you, just as context of, of a practice that we could incorporate.
And, and again, Assistant City Manager, I, I commend all the effort that staff is doing. I'm just saying that I would like to see more communication, and definitely from the
I'm not really sure what to do with this now. So I think that why don't we gather information, Mayor Protem? Why don't we take a little look at what we have on the legislative platform one more time, and look at what we're monitoring already? And since we have no one in that capacity, and I don't think it's fair to add another caveat to a, a staff, let's maybe push this till we get another staff member in that posi- caveat to a staff, let's maybe push this till we get another staff member in that position that will be handling all the legislation. And not to say that we as councilmembers don't stay abreast of all that, because I know you are in that definitely, and keeping tabs on what's going on in Sacramento, although we, you know, that would be my, what I'm kind of getting from that. Is that, is that where we are? Okay, so we are going to table this as well? Or move this on and bring it forward at another time then? Okay, now, moving on to actually putting some dates for...
Madam Mayor?
Sorry?
If I could make a couple suggestions, a suggestion on the second two items, two items, three items. Most of those are dealing with budget issues, and we do have our budget sessions coming up, which those would be completely suited for, that's already going to be agendized.
Right.
I would suggest that Mayor Protem bring those up during those budget sessions.
I think that is a fantastic idea, Councilmember Holliday. And do I have consensus on that, Madam City Manager?
Sorry, I was on the one previous to this one, so if you do this one, and then we'll jump back to the other one about the dates. I was just going to say, it would be very difficult to arrange dates from the dais, but we can certainly work with all the councilmembers, like we normally do in Waste Management, to put those dates together for you.
Oh, the beautification, okay.
Yeah, because I thought we had a date that was selected in...
I thought we did too, because I had talked to Leah about that same thing. So I think we were on the same page.
So we can get that too.
No, 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 thank you, thank you. And your second item is the one that we should bring back to the budget? Yeah. Okay? Does that sound, do we move forward on that? Okay, and I have nothing to add to next, to future agendas right now. And can we have an adjournment without any further business?
We need to recess back into closed session.
Back to closed session.
Oh, that's right. We're going to adjourn back to closed session?
We're going to recess.
Recession, we're going to recess?
Going to recess into closed session?
Yes, we are.
And you will be here? Yes, and you will come back and report out, yes.
We'll report out, okay?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Marietta City Council, and I'd like to take roll call.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Still here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone? Mayor DeForest?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members, I apologize, let the record reflect, all members are present with the exception of Mayor Protem Stone.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Attorney, could you please report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on item CS4, a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. The council had a discussion, there's no reportable action, thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney, and I would like to adjourn.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Was Mayor Protem Stone present during closed session or was she not?
She was present during the entire closed session.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for staying late for us tonight. And we are adjourned.